Wisconsin State Statute 1984. Welcome, everybody.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, all right. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin was breathing. Oh, sorry.
I got choked for a second.
Motion to adopt the Board of Educ- the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Audrey, seconded by Miller Art. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The pass is nine zero. Everybody's here tonight. Safety message, Mr. Hannawell.
Oh, okay. No, it's great. There you go. Thank you. I had a different message prepared with getting school getting ready to come back with our students in two weeks, but I wanted to go a little bit more topical and probably everyone probably knows that I'm going to talk about the heat. As everyone probably has heard, you know, over the last few days. It's unusual what we're getting. In fact, actually, over the last few days and even up to today when I was watching Channel 27, listening to Chief Meteorologist Bob Lindmeyer, we haven't had heat like this in 35 years. Put that in perspective, Commissioner Hayworth and Commissioner Paul were going into the fourth grade when we had heat like this. 1980, 1988.
I was going when you asked how old I was.
Yeah. Why is that important? It's important because when we get heat like this in Wisconsin, we tend to ignore it. We don't know how to deal with it. It's almost like the when people down south, and I grew up down south in Memphis, North Carolina, Virginia, when we get snowstorms down there, you go, geez, what is this? You know, they get two inches of snow and you shut down everything. You know, up here, it's like we watch on the news and go, gee, these people can't drive in snow. We haven't had heat like this and it's dangerous. And, and we take it seriously as all of you probably have seen with the email that Supervisor, excuse me, Superintendent Holsman and Mr. Gasper put out, we've had a change in our schedules, our athletic schedules, to accommodate that. We see too many kids in high school and other sports have significant injuries and deaths related to heat. Most of us are, are familiar with these, heat rash, sunburn, and these things are on a continuum, heat cramps. But then we get into heat exhaustion and heat strokes. And the most dangerous is heat exhaustion because what happens is most of us will go outside, will be working, and we ignore, we ignore the symptoms, we ignore the sweating, the clamminess, and we think, okay, you know, I'm just overheated for the moment. That can change very quickly into a heat stroke, which can be, which can lead to death. And we average in the United States about 700 deaths related to heat-related illnesses. In the last two years, that has jumped up 56% into the neighborhood of 1,100. And the CDC expects because of the heat dome that has encompassed the United States, that to exceed the 1,100 mark this year. So, again, be aware of the symptoms, sweating, clamminess, pulse, a weak pulse, nausea, getting tired, dizziness, headache. Go inside, cool off, the lawn can wait, the gardening can wait, cool down. And if you cannot cool down, usually within 15 minutes, they recommend that you go and see a physician or seek emergency help. Most, everyone knows a lot about these things, but be aware of that, especially in the next two days. I just watched the five o'clock news. It's expected, Madison is expected to hit triple-digit. Janesville at five o'clock today was 90, feeling like 96. Bob Lindmeyer and Channel 27 expect us to be looking at 110-plus in terms of the heat index, which is critical in terms of being outside. And keep that in mind for your, your kids and your pets, too. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Good reminder. Citizen comments? We have none? Okay, thank you. Consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Kathy Myers, seconded by Greg Artree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That passes nine zero. All right. Consider approval of non-certified staff salary increase, Mr. Garner and Mr. McCray.
Motion for approval.
Motion by Kevin, seconded by Jim. Thank you. Any discussion? Let's hear the presentation and also in the memo did not have the dollar amount, so I think that discussed as well. Thank you.
Thank you. As, as an annual piece, we look, the Board annually, I should say, approves the teacher salary structure as we negotiate with the JEA. We create CPI negotiation. With that, then, we take a look at all the jumps on the schedule across the teacher's schedule and create an average percentage increase, which is what we've done this year as well, same as, as we have in the past. One, one question that did come up, it does include administrative and superintendent staff as well. So, I know we had that question last year. It's important to know that. The dollar amount, and I knew, I talked to Mr. McCray this morning, it's $1.62 million.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No, this does not include the superintendent contract. That is on separate, but it's all the principals and administration, right?
So.
Okay, I read it as not to exceed, but, okay, I wasn't sure if it was a separate discussion. I remem-
Based on the recent addendum, from what I understand.
I think it was a separate negotiation. Am I, yeah, I think it's a separate negotiation. And it said staff administrators and the superintendent in the memo, yes. But I think the addendum is, no.
Shall we receive a salary increase of no less than the percentage authorized by the Board for administrators? So, by, by putting it in the memo, you're saying administrators can receive 5.9 and the superintendent receives 5.9.
Kevin?
I think we need to pause and think about that because we've discussed that the superintendent contract is standalone.
Superintendent contract is a standalone approval. We approve that contract and it could be.
You can amend the motion.
Yeah, let's do that.
Or as the person who, who made the motion.
Yeah.
Change their motion.
All right. Want to help me out?
Otherwise, here's the. Unamend your motion to include support staff and administrators.
That would do it, wouldn't it? Just that language?
Yep.
This, this language here, and?
Yep.
Okay. Period. Okay. So if you're looking at the, at the motion, the intent of my amendment to my motion is just to eliminate the word, the three words, and the superintendent. Does that make sense?
All right, so.
Thank you.
Do we have a second on Kevin's motion?
I think I have a second.
Okay.
Friendly amendment, Jim? Well, I got, thank you.
Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Jim to dis- remove and the superintendent from the memo and from the motion to approve the 5.9% increase. All those in favor? Or any more discussion, sorry. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes nine zero. Thank you. We just did. Right, and separate. That will come at a different time, yep. 3.2, consider approval of the 2324 employee handbook updates. Mr. Garner.
Good evening. At PPC, we presented a slew of changes. This is a first round and typically that is the largest round of changes that you'll see in the employee handbook. This is on a quarterly basis. In the memo, it includes what dates. We'll bring back the second, third, and fourth recommendation for changes. And, and we come along across things as we, as directors, look at the handbook in detail and look at things that we need to change for next year or during, throughout the year.
Motion for approval?
Okay, motion made by Kevin, seconded by Lisa. Any discussion? Jim?
So then, in my understanding.
Microphone.
So, we're approving the handbook with the changes that were recommended with the understanding that there'll be more to come as you find them in the course of the year?
That's correct.
Okay.
I had sent a couple of questions today and I know everybody was busy with the really nice Craig event, or the event at Craig today. Can you explain, it says change the terms discharge and discipline or termination, grammatical changes and consistency. What was it changed to? Or can you give an example of that one? It's like the second, the second one noted. And then the second one I have a question on is the title Assistant Director of Administrative and Human Resources to Director Benefits in Administration and Wellness. And that's not in the handbook, so I think that was updated because we're changing the role.
That is correct.
So is this memo just a smidge? Maybe it's pre PPC?
This, this, well, at this point, we have not yet posted for the Director Benefits and Wellness and we're looking at that. So, currently, that's correct with that title.
Okay.
In terms of the discharge and termination, we're just updating the language to reflect what we have as just cause.
Oh, okay, I thought we did that, but good catch then, because I thought we did that years ago. Okay. Awesome. Thank you for the work on that PPC. So we have a motion, sorry, I think by Jim, or sorry, Kevin, seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, PPC update. Commissioner Paul.
Thank you. We met on August 7th for our August PPC meeting. And some of the things that happened at that meeting, we've already voted on, so I'll just kind of gloss over them. The presentation of the Student Parent Handbook, that we voted at our last school board meeting in those updates. So you would have seen those at that time. And then, of course, we just covered the employee handbook update, so you received all of that information. We also received a really great update about the brand-new job fair that the district held this summer. I know there was a lot of excitement. I personally received a lot of feedback from people. You know, my parents who heard about it, and I know that it was on the news and it was very exciting. I believe that there were 60 people in total who attended, if that is the right number, over a two-day event, and it was just generally a huge success. And I did the math and it looked to be about 54 individuals from that event moved across to being offered positions in various placements within our district, including teachers, parent professionals, even substitutes, so from all levels. So, I think that that was really, really wonderful. So kudos to all the staff that worked on that. I know that the conversation was that our team did not have any idea what the turnout was going to be and it could have been a huge flop, but there were people coming. And I know that Superintendent Holsman said that he witnessed somebody outside who like, did like a big yes afterwards because they were just so excited about the opportunity to be able to connect. And I think we talked about it at PPC, how really nice it was that it was thoughtfully done to have a morning session and a later, in the day session. And that sometimes being able to just come in in person is, creates an opportunity for people to connect and maybe be walked through the paperwork and it could be really intimidating, the weekend system that we use for online applications. So, this was great and the idea of talking about considering a mid-year fair as well as we are approaching what we might see as vacancies coming forth later on in the school year, for the next school year. And I think that kind of covers it. I know I looked at staffing information and we still have some vacancies. I know Superintendent Holsman shared that in his update, some special ed vacancies, et cetera. But, you know, that often is the case, that we can't fill every single position. But I know the district will continue working on filling those over the next days, weeks, et cetera. And the next thing we, we discussed was the new employee onboarding training. And Dr. DeGraff did a presentation about that. Some of us were able to participate in the new employee tours and luncheon. And that was my second year being able to participate. And I know personally, I find it very gratifying to be able to meet and greet new employees. And one of them came up to me and said, hi, today. And so I just, like, that's a really nice thing. I feel like we're making a difference when, when we can accomplish something like that. There is a lot of great things. I, I have the handout that we received for all the things that happened for our new teachers last week. Of course, all the staff started this week, today. There was the big celebration that took place. I always also comment on the fact that, boy, I mean, we really do a lot of great things for our new employees as they're starting compared to what, you know, maybe would have happened in other places years ago. And on Facebook, somebody commented that I think they, you know, would have been lucky to get like a bag of chips somewhere or something. So, anyway, I'm just really proud of all the work that everyone's done and it's great to be able to learn about these things in PPC. Our next meeting is going to be delayed a week because of Labor Day. So, the date is the 11th of September at 4:30. And we do happen to have our planning meeting for then the October meeting that same morning. So it's going to be a big day of lots of PPC for myself and the administrators involved and, of course, everyone else. If there's anything that you would like PPC committee to be addressing, talking about, looking forward to this year, please let me know and we'll get that on the agenda. We have a lot of great things planned for the rest of the year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great job. All right. Item number five, FPG update. Mr. Artree.
Yes. I guess first I would encourage all of my fellow Board members to thoroughly review the package since we did not have a recording of our meeting. We were at Franklin. We did a walkthrough as an update of where things are at there. If you've noticed, there's a few new windows that have gone in. And just as I say that, because we, a lot of the update was focused on really to work at Franklin. But when you really walk through and you see the level of detail that had to be done, when you're pulling out these old windows that were literally ground to roof and then you're replacing them and fitting it all back together and really making sure it's ready in time for the students to be there, it's a rather a Herculean effort. But JP Cullen is doing an outstanding job of leading that. A couple of other items to note, since that was primarily driven by Esser funding, a couple of other aspects of our Esser funding and Fund $46, the Craig and Parker greenhouses. It's, when you visualize jumping into a project and you think of how it may go, and then you hit literally the wall and say, if we touch the wall, we have to bring it up to today's code. That means you need to have a little detour. So that's what happened with Craig, well, more so Parker, because of where we envisioned the work being done. Really, we'd have to bring it up to today's code and that would be cost prohibitive. So, working out some, an audible to still complete the work. And then I think the one thing to, to note, as I look at the other referendum work, we have, we will finalize the safe pathway soon, hopefully by the end of the month. So then, as a committee, I do want to walk through that and I'll let all of the Board members know to be welcome to join once you do that. A couple of other things, still focused on facilities. The long-range planning piece, we've engaged our architectural firm, EAU. We had interviews for construction management. Interesting enough, we had only had one applicant. I would assume that the other firms will, don't think they're going to get any business in Janesville with JP Cullen Homes being here. So, they were going to be our construction management firm for just the long-range planning. It's not a project yet because obviously we have to figure out what we don't know to figure out what we want to go from there. We additionally had, I'll say, Civil as we look at athletics, grounds, really to have a full view of all of our facilities. So, we had, we interviewed a couple of firms and we did select, I'm not sure if we've let that be known, who we've chosen. But that effort is really going to get underway in full swing here with all of the selected firms looking for draft end of year-ish. So, that'll be a lot of work for the buildings and grounds and business service along with our contractors. So, looking forward to participating in that. Shout-out goes to early Miles Snyder. And people will go, who is Miles Snyder? He's an individual that loves auctions. So as we think about all of the stuff that's accumulated around the district, that you're going, why do we do with that? Well, maybe historically we didn't want to have, let's just throw it in the dumpster. Well, he's put it out there for auction and has made over $12,000 just doing that. So, that is awesome. Wanted to have the shout-out for him. As I continue that, the Food Service Group under Liz Lidl and her leadership continue to do an outstanding job as we work through all of the reduced federal funding and then what do we need to do to pivot to still be sufficient to supply the meals, breakfast and lunch for all of our students, has done an outstanding job with that. One of the nuances that have happened, which is, I'll say this is good and not so good, but Van Buren qualifies for basically us qualifying to provide free breakfast and lunch. Now, it's good that we're able to do that. It's good, it's not so good because that does reflect the economic situation of the students in that school. But we're able to pivot and all the meals will be supplied at that school also. I think the, probably the last item, we did some other things and you can read on levy and debt management and some things that need to do as we look forward to what happens in the future. But that's more of a different conversation. One of the things that I really tasked our committee at the end, and I would really suggest Commissioner Paul, that maybe for the committee, is make sure that what we're doing from a mission, vision, and purpose is what we want to be doing. As we look at strategic planning and going through that effort and making sure the work of the committee matches what we really wanted to do. I see a huge change potentially as we look at the finance part and the buildings and grounds, equally huge pieces. And I do believe they should still be together, but maybe we just want to look and make sure that we are doing the items that the nine of us think we should be doing. So, we will be talking through that a bit more. Thank you.
Kevin?
Thanks, Greg, for all your work. I'd just like to have a little more feedback about our outside grounds. If I, correct me if I'm wrong, you said that we are, that somebody, a firm, is engaged in assessing our athletic facilities outside?
Yeah, it's a full facility assessment, buildings, internal, external, looking at what should we have from an overall athletic usage standpoint, including our existing grounds? Do we expand elsewhere? What all can we do? So, yes, that'll be part of what we're looking at.
And I'm sure you guys have seen the, the existing plan that was created?
Yes.
Okay. Also, it says in the minutes that we've added two groundskeeper positions. That's, that's true?
I will let Mr. McCray address that.
The district has now added two groundskeeper position and will add more in the future.
I appreciate Ms. Jensen, hang on, every word I say. So, we actually converted a facilities carpenter position, there was a retirement there, into a grounds position. I think our goal, and we just haven't finished writing the memo, is to move to two, right, grounds positions throughout the district. So that's probably an area we've been lacking in over the years. When I look at our secondaries in particular, and let's focus at the two flagship high schools. Right, we have one maintenance individual who's responsible, we'll say, for approximately 300,000 square feet indoors and then the grounds as well, right? And so I think in chatting with our principals, right, the viewpoint would be I'd rather have that maintenance staff member in our buildings rather than on a mower, particularly during high mowing times, right? So that's, that's the vision. So we converted really only one. The vision is, is do we move to two? It was probably more, we'd always like to have more, all right? But like, in my role, we'd all would like to have more and what can we afford? So, most likely two is what we'll end up hopefully targeting and funding an additional one.
I just have to continue with this discussion because when I say groundskeeper right away, I'm thinking of baseball fields. Which I'm, I'm sure that's part of the job description if you're a groundskeeper, is to maintain athletic facilities?
Right, that.
Outdoor facilities?
Yeah, that's certainly part of it, right?
Okay.
And just in clarity.
But we do all that in-house, all.
We do all of that in-house.
All the painting of the fields.
Exactly.
All of that.
So Tyler and Greg is an example, are targeted with field lining, right? And some maintenance, but then when we look at our 225 acres throughout the district that we maintain, right, that's more than just those two gentlemen, right? In addition to, we'll say, the field markings of preparing fields for play, let alone the trees, the shrubs, the signage and all of that stuff.
So, so I haven't been over to Parker in about two months. I did, did my own tour of the grounds and I took a lot of pictures and I shared a lot of those. So I haven't been over there to see if anything's changed or not. But I do live real close to Craig. And geez, anything south of the north parking lot, including the bowl and the two soccer fields, are just gorgeous. Just beautiful. Anything north of the parking lot looks awful.
Right.
So, I consistently am getting feedback from people living in that neighborhood. One example is that volleyball court along Ruger Avenue.
Right.
There's, it's full of grass and debris, the nets are hanging, there's, there's weeds as tall as my hip over there and it's been this way since.
The growing season.
Since the snow melted. And now it's become personal for me because I'm tired of getting, people tell me, Murray, what the hell is going on over there? You know, I'm almost compelled to go do it myself. But I don't understand how we, thousands of people drive up and down Ruger Avenue, right by the high school, and have to look at that. And the batting cage has been down and dilapidated for a long time. And these aren't, this is like the hanging, low-hanging fruit, right?
The district.
To me, it looks like it.
Is a bushel of low-hanging fruit. Correct.
So.
Mr. Murray, no one, no one will argue with, with you. Absolutely not. Mr. Murray, no one, no one will argue with, with you, absolutely not.
But nothing's getting done, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thanks, Kevin. I do have a couple of questions, because I've not read the minutes, and I apologize, I couldn't attend the meeting. Can you talk about the information on athletic coach compensation, what happened on there? And then, secondly, the recommendation forthcoming to like an hourly wage increase for food service? Have we not done market studies on that recently, or, you know, because it's beyond the five point nine percent approved tonight?
Yeah, great question. So I think what we've tried to do with finance is really plant that seed in terms of things that we're working on, whether that's working with Jim McLaury and athletic coach compensation so as to avoid the, surprise, right, here's a new athletic compensation model. So there's nothing really, it's still a work in progress, right, so it's just a way for us to continue to keep finance, and then obviously the board as a whole of moving forward. Because I think over recent, excuse me, recent months, you know, we've just heard, like, geez, that's maybe something that we need to look at. I think administratively, right, it's important we settle with our employee groups first, right? Now, we did also take a look at summer school compensation at the onset or dawn of summer school and curriculum writing, not that athletic coach compensation is less of a priority, right, but there are just some larger boulders or rocks to move first, right? Last year, you may recall, we took a look at paracompensation. Most likely, just in terms of market, we're going to need to revisit that as well. And what we shared with the finance committee is when we look at food service, right, those two are our lowest-paid entry-level positions within the district, right, and dare I say that, they're due as well. So as we work on the budget development, right, and keep in mind, food service is really a self-funded, right, Mr. Murray would remind us that it's all taxes, whether they're federal taxes or whether they're local taxes, but certainly the revenue received in food service for the most part is federally funded, thus federal taxes. But it operates in and of its own Fund Fifty, right, so there's no support from Fund Ten unless it happens to go into deficit. So really, as we're working on budget development, understanding that there are market pressures to address, we'll say, food service, and then we know perhaps throughout the twenty-three, twenty-four year, we really want to go back and take a look at the, if you will, para-wage. And what I also shared with the committee, right, is keep in mind that there's a difference between labor rate and labor cost, right? Labor rate is essentially your hourly wage. When we look at the cost of labor, right, it's really looking at, I won't say the productivity, but how we're using FTEs and staff, and is there a better way to perhaps model in order to afford a market adjustment?
Anything else? Thank you for that.
Sure.
All right. Okay, so, was that for, no, that was just your update, thank you, Greg, good, good update. Thanks for all the work you're doing, that committee. Summary of board requests, I don't have any. All right. And future meeting dates, Denise?
The PPC committee will meet on Monday, September eleventh, at four-thirty PM here at the Educational Services Center. Our next Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, September twelfth, the next day, at six PM, also here at the ESC. Our Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting will be on Tuesday, September nineteenth, at four PM. Currently, it's scheduled at the ESC, but that location may change. And then our second Board of Education meeting for September will be on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, at six PM, again here at the ESC.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Maybe ten or fifteen minutes, kind of reorganized, we're trying to step this next round.